I now call to order the August 21st, 2017 meeting of the New County Independent School District Board of Trustees at 6:31 PM. Let's demonstrate that a quorum is present with Ms. Shipley, Mr. Wood being absent. Please rise to the invocation to be given by Mr. Turner and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance and honor of the Texas flag to be led by Ms. Brickell.
Please bow. God and Father, we do thank you for this great day you've given us today. We ask you to keep your hand over. This upcoming year, our students, our faculty, we ask that tonight that we honor you in all that we do. And we do just thank you for another good year at New County ISD. Jesus our prayer amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor of the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the two Texas states, one state under God, one indivisible.
Item 2 on the agenda is recognition of the Porter High School Skills USA team. Criminal justice presented by Ms. Murphy.
Hi, thank you guys. It is my serious honor to recognize one of our very finest kids, most accomplished kids. So let me just get right to that. I want to brag on her just a little bit. First of all, she's been in the district since 4th grade. I remember her from Kingsmire when I was an assistant principal and she never came to the office, so. But she's been with us a long time. I'm speaking about your very own Lizette Moreno. She is being recognized tonight as the national president, national president of Skills USA, which is an extremely huge honor. I can't imagine how many scholarship opportunities and what wonderful things this fine young lady is going to accomplish. And she's got roots here, right with us. I'm super, super proud. Just a few words from a couple of her teachers. One of our very best, member of cross-country track team, member of the House of Business and Criminal Justice at PHS, three-time student attorney for mock trial team, of course for the Spartans, a past state officer, of course, and now we know she's been selected and elected to be the national president for Skills USA. Many scholarships are coming her way. I just can't say enough about what a great kid that she really is. Lizette is very special. She helped us introduce our speaker last week for the secondary staff development, Dr. Rich Allen, and he was super impressed with her as well. She's given up countless hours of her own time just to help us and the teachers and whatever we need. She's always there for us, so we're super excited to be there when she receives this great recognition. She's going to talk to you guys just a little bit more about what Skills USA really is. So presenting Lizette Moreno for her high school.
Good afternoon. Raise your hand if you have played dominoes before. See, when I was a kid, I used to take these dominoes and I would line them up one by one, one behind the other. And then I would go back to the beginning and I would push one to fall. And then slowly one would make the other fall. That push changed the course of all the dominoes. Having the opportunity to be that push in someone else's life is an absolutely huge responsibility. I was elected as a Skills USA national officer this summer here in June. It took countless hours of training. My first domino fell when I went to the Skills USA Texas conference. And there is a very rigorous application process and a lot of Texans want to be the candidate for this great state. We are one of the largest states in Skills USA. So we went through the interview process. I took a test. They only took the top 30 scores. I made it past that round, made it to be interviewed. I was the first one to go in. I was very nervous. I was like, I know I've been secretary for the state of Texas, but I wanted a little bit more than that. And I knew I could shoot for more than that. And the teachers at Porter High School showed me that I had what it takes to be more than that. Once I heard my name announced at the state conference that I was the candidate for Texas, that was when another domino fell. I was like, oh my goodness, I'm going to have the chance to represent our great North Star State at the national conference, competing to be one of five officers in the at-large high school division. So I showed up to nationals, all excited. I had all of my campaign materials, my buttons, my bracelets, but most of all, I had my burden. I spent countless hours practicing my speech, reading the constitution and bylaws, studying every knowledge question I expected a Skills USA officer to know. I studied this so much, I, instead of listening to music in my car, I would play a recording of myself giving my own speech. I cared about this so much because Skills USA gave me opportunities that I never imagined. I never imagined I would step in the same place where Martin Luther King stood and give his "I Have A Dream" speech. I would never imagine I would have got to meet the office of Ted Cruz and see him preside over a congressional meeting, let alone impact and receive cards from members about how I changed their lives. That's when I realized when you have the ability to get that push and cause that positive domino effect in other people's lives, it's absolutely breathtaking. I've had the opportunity to really dive into how Skills USA is an integral part of the instructional program within our own school, at the trainings in Indiana and DC that I've been to so far. On Thursday, I have the honor of traveling to North Carolina. And that's while I will be trained on how you teach other members of Skills USA how to create effective messages to give to our congressmen and legislators. This training is called WLTI, and that will happen in September. And I'm super excited because our members are just so ecstatic to get to talk to these senators and legislators and inform them about what we really do. Because career and technical education is truly changing the lives of students in many ways. Now, you as a school board have this opportunity to continue to be the push students need. And I thank you every day because students like me without the support of Upani ISD wouldn't be where I am today. So that is always appreciated because you never know when you are pushing someone else. To have a complete change in their path, a career change, you just don't know what's happening in other people's lives. And that's always very grateful for students like me who have had that change in their lives. So thank you so much for everything that you do for our district. And I'm truly honored to come from New County ISD. Like she said, I've been here since the 4th grade. And our district has grown immensely. Like I remember, we used to be just like a smaller district and I would have this great stadium. He's now a torrent. And Skills USA is also growing. We're over 398,488 members currently. And just to have the opportunity to be one of the five officers that serve them is absolutely breathtaking. And I am so excited to dive into volunteering and figuring out how I can continue that route. Because getting elected is only the first domino of all. It's still, it's going to keep going. Doesn't matter if I'm volunteering here in the district, if I'm meeting new members or students at the school, or going on Skills USA trips. So thank you for allowing me to stand before you this morning and share just one of the dominoes that you have helped evolve. Thank you.
I'm Randy, you're up next.
Item 3 on the agenda is public hearing on New County ISD 2017-2018 budget and 2017 tax rate presented by Ms. Fain. Big shoes to fill.
I know, so I'm not going to follow that. Okay, we're going to start off with the general fund, child nutrition fund, and debt service fund budget. To the public, if you didn't sign in, if you would please sign in. And then there's some packets in the back if you want a copy of this. Starting off with the general fund budget, we budgeted local revenues of $45,010,010, state revenues of $91,888,433, and federal revenues of $885,000. For total revenues of $137,783,533. For the expenditures, also $137,783,533 for a general fund balance budget. In the child nutrition fund, local revenues of $2,498,372, state revenues of $340,000, and federal revenues of $6,846,570. For total revenues of $9,684,942, and total expenditures of $9,784,942. This is a planned drawdown of fund balance of $100,000 so she can do some upgrades and get some additional equipment for the buildings. In the debt service fund, we had local revenues of $19,095,623, state revenues $6,773,861, and total expenditures for debt service of $26,534,680. This is also a planned drawdown of fund balance of $665,196. The budgets for general fund and debt service fund are based on a taxable value of $3,642,069,481 at a 97.5% collection rate. The general fund tax rate presented is $1.17 and the debt service tax rate is 50 cents. The average daily attendance for both of these funds is $14,420. Whenever they get ready to make the motion for the tax rate adoption, he is going to read it and is going to say, "I move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of $1.67." We are not actually increasing our tax rate. This goes off the effective tax rate. And the effective tax rate for New Caney is 1.6053. And what that means is based off the values, the current values for 2017, we have only had to adopt a tax rate of 1.6053 to get the same exact revenue as last year. Well, with the growing district, we do need additional revenue and we're presenting to keep our tax rate the same of $1.67. And once again, that's $1.17 for MNO and 50 cents for INS. The next budget to present is the accelerated education budget. Legally, we have to adopt this budget before we can adopt any other state fund. So the accelerated education budget has state revenue of $3,432,859, and expenditures of $3,432,859 as well, and that is a balanced budget. Are there any questions from the board or the public?
Item 4 on the agenda is consideration of adoption of the 2017-2018 accelerated education budget.
I ask that the school board would adopt the accelerated education budget as presented in the public hearing in your package.
Is there a motion to approve the 2017-2018 accelerated education budget? There'll be no further discussion. All of the papers say aye. I'll oppose. Motion is approved. Item 5 on the agenda is consideration of adoption of the 2017-2018 general fund, child nutrition, and debt service budgets.
I'm asking the school board to approve the budget for general fund, debt service, and child nutrition as presented in your packets and in the public hearing.
Is there a motion to approve the 2017-2018 general fund, child nutrition, and debt service budgets? Motion to move to second. All of the papers say aye. All's opposed. Motion is approved. Item 6 on the agenda is consideration of 2017 tax rate.
And we are requesting that the board approve $1.17 for the MNO tax rate and 50 cents for the INS tax rate.
Is there a motion to approve the 2017 tax rate?
I move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of $1.67, which is equally a 4.03% increase in the tax rate, $1.17 for maintenance and operations, and 50 cents for interest and security.
Motion to move to second. All of the papers say aye. All's opposed. Motion is approved.
Thank you.
Item 7 on the agenda is open forum. Nobody signed up. Item 8 on the agenda is closed meeting. The board will now meet in closed meeting under the authority of Texas Government Code Section 551.074 for the purpose of personnel matters, Government Code 551.071 for attorney consultation, Government Code 551.072 for deliberation regarding the purchase and exchange lease for value of real property, and Government Code 551.076 for deliberation regarding security of the devices or security audits. Any action as a result of closed session discussion will take place after the board recommends and open meeting. Time is 6:45 PM. The board is closed meeting at 7:51 PM and will now recommence open session. Item 9 on the agenda is reports and proposals to board members. Item 10 on the agenda is superintendent's report. Ms. Fain, have a fit.
Hey. We've been talking about the $50,000 report that comes to y'all every month. We had a lot of conversations in our department about, well, was this included in a board action already? Do we really need to take this to the board for approval? Or was it part of something else you've already acted on? We called the attorney and talked to her about it. And basically, there is no legal requirement for us to take and purchase to y'all that's over $50,000. Basically, that's in our local policy as well as our purchasing procedures. So at the board meeting at the end of August, we are going to break back CH local and request that that be taken off the board policy. Basically, what she said is that when you adopt the budget, you've already allowed us to spend up to a certain dollar amount. So us bringing this back to you for approval again is like just getting a second approval on something you've already approved us to do. So basically, what the wording would change to is that the board delegates the superintendent or designated the authority to determine the method of purchasing in accordance with CH legal and to make budgeted purchases. So anytime there's something that might go outside the budget, or if we have additional revenues, say we wanted this project, that would be brought back at that time. Also, what she said is on the construction budget, that the wording on there really hasn't been accurate. So what she's suggesting is that during, on an action item that we put, that during the design phase of construction, you know, you award the contract to so-and-so, and then any requisitions pertaining to the design phase up to this dollar amount. So basically, the full amount. That way, it covers us, y'all have the approval for all the construction stuff, and then you're also covered under the other part because you allow us that up in the budget. So we just wanted to kind of give you a heads up on that, and we'll be bringing that at the last board meeting in August. Questions?
So I just wanted to give you a date on child nutrition, some of the things that we're moving forward with in the new year, some changes that are going to occur under USDA. And we're excited to have a new ag commissioner. He seems to be very interested in child nutrition. As you say, he has 14 critics that live with him and that is his grandchildren, so I hope to see some good things come out of the meals, which he has already started to improve. One of the things that has come full circle is branding our products and making it where we are recognized for the service that we do for the students, kind of like a mascot in elementary or something. So I came up with a brand of Healthy You to recognize not only students and staff, but to focus on their health overall, not just physically, but mentally as well. So this will be the brand that you'll see on our serving wines, recommending the fruits and vegetables as well. So you'll see those changes. And it gives us that business effect for our department. Also, some of the changes, yeah, I guess, let's go over to the next. Charge policy. This has, again, a new USDA ruling, is there were really no guidelines given other than you had to establish a charge policy. So we have always had a charge policy. We could not carry a debt balance in child nutrition because we are totally federal-funded program. In USDA, the district was having to repay the charges at the end of the fiscal year. They came out with a policy, this is, you know, we have all the lunch changes and things that you hear about, and there's been a lot of media coverage of us pulling trays from students, but those were under our guidelines from USDA. What they have established now is that we cannot call it an alternate meal after we've served a child-based charge meal, but that we must offer an additional meal to them at no charge, but we cannot classify as an alternate meal. Currently in our district, every student has three lunch charges. We were pulling the trays only if they were in excess and continuously abusing the system. We tried not to pull lunch trays at all. It does happen because you do have kids that may have $20 to $22 in charges. At the end of the school year, we had $7100 in meal charges. As of last week, we had collected almost $3,000 of those through letters, phone calls, things like that. Currently, we're at $4,500 in meal charges. Most of the charges, I will tell you, come from our reduced students. Right now, currently, as of today, we're at 61% economically disadvantaged, with 56.5% being free. The other 5% are reduced students, and those tend to be the ones that their meal charges add up 40 cents over a long period of time adds up. So those were the majority of our meal charges in there. So what I'm recommending is to allow students three meals, not to exceed $9 in charges. Elementary students, we will not pull any trays. Middle school as well. We found in correspondence with the parents, especially in middle school, I never want to target those middle school kids because that really is a tough age for them to be embarrassed in. I don't want to do that. High school seems to be able to find money places, and a lot of them, right, they can always find their money. But they seem to do it a little bit better. One of the things that has come up is that setting up a separate fund for organizations, parents to donate to. They would have to be in a general fund and people would be able to donate to that. And at the end of the year, we would just take the money from that versus activity funds from the campus. So that's another way to get the community involved in helping. So that's a positive on that. So the charge policy will come up later. We have to review that and have to establish one. But I do feel like if we give students three meals, we're sending the notices home, we call the parents, we can email if they provided that information. So we try to do as much as we can there. They can apply online, they can use their cell phones to apply for the meal program. There's lots of avenues that they can reach out to us. If we have a student in need, the principals are aware that they can write a letter, fill out the application, send it to me, and we can get the kids on the program. So there are other avenues for the students. And we never want to take a tray from a child. None of my staff wants to do that. That's not our goal. But we want to start as many kids as we can, but we have to establish a charge policy. The next thing that they ask is for a wellness policy, and that is not something we've devoted on, but that I believe is in your board book, and it was highlighted and read some of the changes. One of our big concerns that is mandated is that we have a SHAC committee, which is the Student Health Advisory Committee. And Mr. Castleberry has always been involved in that and overseeing that program with us. It is supposed to be a parent-run committee, and we have yet to have parents get involved unless it is a parent that works in the school district. So we've been reaching out. It is posted on our website. We have invited parents. We have done any kind of flyer you can imagine. We can't seem to get participation in this. So we're looking at some of the timings of the meetings. We've been having them in the mornings, we've tried the afternoon, we've tried the nighttime, it's not working. But that is where the wellness policy, we are required to have the SHAC committee, and we do meet at least three times a year. So if you see information, we'd love to participate. We'd love to have you on the committee. The next is the supper program. Because we are growing in our high schools, one of the things that has come out is our athletes, students taking after school in high schools seem to be coming in hungry in the mornings, not going home at night to get an evening meal. So we have the capability of feeding our students all three meals. This would be any student under the age of 18. If they are 19 and they are enrolled in school, we can feed them. But if they're a student or a member in the community, we can reach out through this supper program and feed the students. We would like to pilot it at Upani High School and Porter High School because that's the highest activities we have. So what I'm looking at is parents that are coming in to pick up their students from after-school activities would be able to send their younger children in to grab a meal and go home with that meal as well. So it's a totally free program for our students. And I think we could reach out to a lot of our students through that program. The other alternate choice would be to do a snack for them, but often a snack is just, it's a six-ounce juice and some type of a cracker or something. So it's really not sustainable enough until the next morning. So I think we would see, hopefully, see some changes. I visited with the coaches on guest and a few of the teachers, and they're real excited about the program. You know, any kid in an extracurricular activity, they're hungry at the end of the day. Some have lunch at 11:15. So this program would run for two hours, and it would be from 4:00 in the afternoon till 6:00. So during that time, there should be ample time for man, like any student there, to pick up a meal and take it home to go. So it's an option course that we're looking at. We'd like, we are going to pilot it at both campuses with one employee. Because I feel like it's a grab-and-go meal. I can staff it with one employee. We'll be in a location that students will not have to access the building, and keep them towards the gym end where they're coming in from athletics or any kind of game activities that that is not interfering with them walking through the school building. So it's a safe environment.
How do you monitor the amount of food they get?
The food is pretty-
And maybe a football player come in and grab 40 sandwiches and roll?
No, we would, we would try and identify those. I mean, you would keep a log of those, but yes, if they had your kid right. That's okay. No, we would have to monitor that. But you know, if you see that kid come back twice, you know he's really hungry, then we're going to offer that meal to them. We're not going to turn that child away. There was an example given to me the other day by a student that really was very upset. On a Friday, he didn't want to go home because he knew he was going to have any meal on the weekend. And this really captured me because how many kids do leave on a Friday that they're not going to get that meal over the weekend? So this is an opportunity for us to reach out to all of our students.
What about those students that practice those beyond 6? Do you have students that practice past 6? On occasion, yep.
And I talked to Coach Pinton and Coach Holly about some of those activities. And what they could do is grab that meal before practice and take it to their locker, and they would be able to hold on to that because it would be in a safe temperature zone for those two hours or so. So it would be allowable.
I just was concerned about the times.
Yes. And I tried looking at extending the time, but I only have a two-hour window that they actually will let you open. So you're kind of limited. Unless we open at 4:30 and push it back, then I don't want to miss any of the other students that might be leaving in a right after school.
Do all our kids return back? You said New Caney High School, Porter High School, so the baseball track. Are they all returning back to the high school for that? Or are you going to?
What we've been doing for our track teams and basketball teams and things, and we've had very good success at New Caney High School, and I'm working with the coaches over at Porter High School, is I'm able to pack them a lunch to take with them, and we would be able to claim that meal because they'll be serving it later in the day. So if they're going out for a track meet or an event like that, then I would take the meal counts and charge that accordingly, and then we would claim it on that. So it would work for athletes that are traveling as well. Plus, it's a cost savings.
We're no longer, so that's what we're doing now, like when the boys travel on a football team with a team? You're making the meals now, or they're not buying them, like having them shipped in like they did before?
That's going to be up to the coaches, how they want to do that. But this is a service we can offer, and we are currently doing it for our track teams and things. Currently, we've been doing it as a catering, and we charge $3.75 for the meal. They get a six-ounce chogie, a fruit, a vegetable, a 16-ounce bottle of water, and some type of a snack item. Then the coaches have been buying an extra peanut butter and jelly sandwich. So they eat that on the way. So for $5, they're getting a pretty good meal to get the kids back, you know, to the event and back from the event.
So this is to, it's a grab-and-go, right?
It's a grab-and-go.
No tables there, they're-
No tables, anything. They take it in, they leave it.
So anybody in the elementary school that needed the meal, they could come to either one of the high schools?
Yes, and get that meal at the designated spot. And we want to be close to the doors so that they could just come right inside and get that. Any other questions? We will give you updates on that as it comes. We have, we've sent our application, and it takes about three weeks to actually get it processed. So we should have by the end of September, should be in that full circle. Coming soon, we are having a Healthy You food truck. We are going to take one of our current warehouse trucks and convert it into a food truck, which will handle delivering meals to various sites. We can use this for our supper program as well, and I have, that is Sheldon's right now that they have redone. They do not have the drawings back on our truck yet. But this truck will also be used, I have a staff member that will go to the administration, transportation, maintenance sites to offer a hot or a cold lunch on a day. transportation maintenance sites to offer a hot or a cold lunch on a daily basis for the staff, and it will be reasonably priced for them as well off of the food truck. Then we will use that for our catering services as well. But it will put New Caney out there as a, um, popular food truck, and I think it'll be great for our department, too. It has lights, bells, all kinds of things, so we can really, um, pump it up and start, you know, during the summer feeding program, we'll be able to use that to go to other parks as well and deliver meals to students.
Cool question.
Any questions?
Any ice cream on that truck?
Sure, we have ice cream. We absolutely do, because now we are featuring Blue Bunny Ice Cream.
Blue Bunny.
Blue Bunny. Sorry, we will not, we're not-.
We got Blue, right?
I got Blue, but yes, Blue Bunny is coming to all campuses when he starts school next week. So, yeah.
Two, set bill, give me two.
So, when we do the, uh, so that'll be a traveling type of deal for the employees, so they'll know it'll be a set deal every day, same type of deal, same consent?
Yes, yes. Well, the menu will vary on a daily basis of what's on the truck, so, then we will send it out to the staff when the truck's coming. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, we have, uh, Mr. Kyle LaBlanc provide an update on LAN for, uh, facility-.
Facility Condition Assessment?
Yes, sir.
All right. Mr. Franklin, Board of Trustees, thanks for having us out tonight. What I'm here to discuss is really an update on the project that, that the Board of Trustees approved, LAN, to undertake back in May. That project is this comprehensive five-years facility condition assessment project. Really, that the project is broken down into three parts, if you remember from what you approved, and that was district design standards, the facility condition assessment, and then the, the capital improvement plan or this long-range facility plan. That's part of our work. So, what I'm, what I'm here tonight to discuss with you is, is really broken down into two parts. Where have we, where have we been so far, and where are we going? So, just as a recap from what we've done in the past four months since that approval is, the district design standards is broken down into the district design standards and the facility condition assessment. So, in that district design standards piece of our work, we visited with a lot of familiar faces behind me, uh, with the curriculum instruction staff to develop those district design standards, the primary and secondary curriculum instruction. That document is coming together, and it, and it's being wrapped up, and should, we should be able to present that here to the district in the next month or so. The facility condition assessment side is another piece of the project that we've really been performing over this summer. So, if you talk to any of our assessors that have been out in the field, inside and outside of your district facilities, they, they would be able to tell you what they did on their summer vacation was to walk in and out of all your district facilities. So, that, that part of the project, the, the in and out of all the buildings from the comprehensive assessment side has been wrapped up, that's been completed, and right now, we're processing the data and writing the report that will be presented to the staff, and you should be able to see us probably in, at the October board meeting for our presentation on the results of that project. What I really want to talk to you tonight about is where we're going in the next six months, and I believe everybody should have this, uh, this document. It might not be as big as this one that I'm holding up here, but I've got a couple of copies within. Take one down and pass it around. It's a little easier to read in that smaller version there. So, this, uh, so this document that you have in front of you called, titled The Long-Range Facility Planning Committee, this document here is really going to be this governing document over the next six months for a committee that will be formed as part of a long-range facility plan. What you see here on the document, on the first page, which has the, the text on it, that first third of the page includes, uh, a goal, a purpose, a charge, and a function for that long-range facility plan, planning committee. Those are some general guidelines for what the committee is about, and what they're for, and what their charge is to be as part of the, as part of this long-range facility plan. Right in the middle of that first page is our schedule, what we're anticipating to happen over the next six months to complete this long-range facility plan of project, as part of the project. Really, and it's broken down into an eight-meeting course, where you'll see that the first three meetings are going to be about information and data, where LAN is basically its outbound communication on what information we develop through the district design standard part of our work, through the facility condition assessment part of our work, and there's also going to be a piece of, uh, information related to growth and where, uh, where the demographers' information will come into play. So, that's all outbound communication that the district, uh, or that the committee will hear. Meetings four through six lays out, uh, a feedback portion of our work that has to do with prioritization of that information that they hear about over the first three meetings. Meetings seven and eight are all about consensus and building that, that committee's consensus about the information that they've heard and that they've digested over the course of that first six meetings. These meetings will be broken down to what we perceive as aging facilities, uh, evolving to twenty-first century educational, uh, learning environments, and then finally, growth is that third piece of the puzzle that will be folded into this. So, you can see those themes laid out over the course of the first three meetings, over the course of, uh, meetings four through six, and then finally, the consensus. The, the part where the district, uh, where the Board of Administrat-, uh, the Board of Trustees comes into play is right there at the end of, of this process where board action, what we have planned is board action happening over the, over the month of January and into February, to hear results of that feedback from the committee and make a decision on any particular capital planning that comes out of this committee. So, that, that kind of wraps up and summarizes the document. There's details on the, the bottom third of that page and on the back of that page as to what we anticipate each meeting covering and the details about that. LAN will be facilitating each one of those meetings as we go through them. What we're here to ask you tonight is a little take-home homework, even though you might not want any homework to go home with, but what we're asking, what we're asking you as the Board of Trustees is to come to Mr. Franklin with recommendations for who those committee members might be, and what we're looking for is a suggestion of one to two committee members to take to Mr. Franklin and then have him prescribe who will be on that committee. As far as the total amount of committee members, they're probably going to be in the range of fifteen to twenty-five or so committee members, and that, that list will be tapered down over the, over the next couple of months with Mr. Franklin's review. And what, what we're looking for is, is names of people from the community who you might want to see on that committee, and then also, as you're communicating with those recommended people, uh, let them know of the time commitment. So, that's what's part of the reason you have this document in front of you, so that you can explain to these people, we're cramming in several meetings into a pretty short timeframe, and the first, the first six meetings or so are back-to-back, week to week, and, uh, it's a, probably going to be a two-hour commitment each one of these Thursday nights. So, as you review that and think about who you might think, feel is a good candidate for this committee, have those conversations with that person, or have that in mind when you're making your recommendations to Mr. Franklin. That kind of wraps up what I have, uh, to discuss, so we talked about the, the overall progress of the project so far over the summer, and really what the next step forward is going to be with this facility planning committee. So, we can definitely take any questions that want to be out there.
Any questions?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you all very much. It's been a fun project.
Paul McIlroy.
Yes, sir.
Item eleven on the agenda is the consent, consistent consideration of minutes, consideration of financial reports, consideration of purchasing reports, consideration of personnel reports, consideration of twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen appraisal calendar, consideration of UI reception courses, consideration of local policy update one oh seven, consideration of local policy CQA, and consideration of board meeting dates. Is there a motion to approve the items on the schedule?
Certainly.
Thank you. There may be no further discussion. All those papers say aye. All opposed? Motion is approved. Item twelve on the generation, on the agenda is consideration of child nutrition charge policy, considered by this meeting.
As I previously mentioned, uh, we would like to, um, establish the charge policy for New Caney County's D in accordance with USDA and TDA guidelines of three meals are not to exceed nine dollars per student in all grade levels.
Any further questions? Is there a motion to approve the child nutrition charge policy?
Disagree.
Motion been moved to second. All those papers say aye. All opposed? Motion is approved. Item thirteen on the agenda is consideration of approved election agreements.
We're asking that you approve the joint election agreements with Paris and Montgomery Counties for the fall Board of Trustees election.
Any questions? Is there a motion to approve the election agreements?
Certainly.
Motion been moved to second. All those papers say aye. All opposed? Motion is approved. Item fourteen on the agenda is consideration of approved the twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen Parent-Student Handbook and the Student Code of Conduct.
Sir, we're asking for you to approve the two thousand seventeen, eighteen Parent-Student Handbook and Student Code of Conduct. That was in your form packet, please.
We'd like for you to read it to us, please.
Yes, sir.
Just kidding.
It's a bit of a time, just the red parts.
Are there any questions about the, the agenda? Is there a motion to approve the twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen Parent-Student Handbook and the Student Code of Conduct? Motion been moved to second. All those papers say aye. All opposed? Motion is approved. Item fifteen on the agenda is consideration of approval for change, proposal request number two, for changes to the classrooms and administration areas of Brookwood Forest Elementary School.
Yes, sir. This change order is to have some additional windows added to the interior of the building, uh, classrooms and office spaces, as well as modifying the administration area of the school to make it more open, conducive to collaboration between the administration and community.
Windows? Are there any questions? Is there a motion to approve the change proposal request number two, for changes to the classrooms and administration areas of Brookwood Forest Elementary School, bond twenty fifteen?
Second.
Motion been moved second. All those papers say aye. All opposed? Motion is approved.
No, sorry.
This is Brookwood.
It gets done with Halloween.
You got swimming on the bridge.
Item sixteen on the agenda is consideration of approval for change proposal request number thirty-five for landscaping and irrigation bond twenty fifteen at the matatorium.
Yes, sir. This is for the landscaping, that'll go on both the east and west side of the matatorium and irrigation.
Any questions? Is there a motion to approve the bond, approve the change proposal request number thirty-five for landscaping and irrigation bond twenty fifteen at the matatorium? Motion been moved second. All those papers say aye. All opposed? Motion is approved. There may be no further business. Meeting is adjourned at eight twenty-one P.M.